Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Vice Chair Alain.
Present.
Commissioner Callardine.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
Thank you. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The planning, sorry, the agenda was available for public access at City Hall in the exterior bulletin board and was also available online by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, March 21, in accordance with our policies and procedures.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a, this, we're moving to public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items, and items that are within our subject matter jurisdiction. Please note that we can't take action on items that aren't agendized. Each speaker will have three minutes. Members of the public who would like to comment on the consent or new business items are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
There are no members online, and I believe the members in the audience are here for the hearing.
Okay. Before us is the consent calendar, and it's the approval of the minutes of February 28, 2024. And for the members, there is a revised set of minutes that are in front of you. And the major changes, I believe, have to do with public benefits, item two, that reflects what, what we asked for and what went to council.
Move to approve the minutes as revised.
Is there a second? Can you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Alain.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Chair Wermick.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Callardine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
There are no public hearings, and there is no unfinished business. The new business that is before us is item 3A, request by AG Land Investments LLC for the approval of a two-year extension of time application for an approved tentative tract map case TTM 38049 to subdivide 2.53 acres of undeveloped land to create eight single-family residential parcels for future development. Staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening. The application in front of you tonight is an extension of a time request for an approved tentative tract, tract map number 38049. This application was originally reviewed by the Planning Commission in 2022 in conjunction with other applications that are associated with the project. At the meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project to the city council, and the city council approved all applications on March 24. The case TTM 38049 proposed an eight-unit subdivision of the 2.53 acre, acre for future single-family residential parcels. At the time of the review, the applicant did not have any physical development proposal for the site, and nothing has been submitted to the planning services as of today. The associated applications include the general plan amendment, which changed the site's industrial land use designation to very low-density residential, and also a change of zone application, which changed the site's MOP, planned research and development park zone designation to single-family residential, which is R1C, and then also an administrative minor modification application to reduce the lot width from the code required, 130 feet to 117. The section 94.12 of the zoning code provides procedures for processing and reviewing extension of time applications for planning applications. However, this particular section is not applicable for the review of this particular application, and the Palm Springs zoning code, the section 94.12, actually defers to the section that's located within the municipal code section Title IX under subdivision of land. So this application is subject to the procedures that are in the Title IX of the municipal code. And in this particular section of the municipal code, there are no specific findings or review criteria that are prescribed for the planning commission for the review and approval. However, the section of the code notes that the applicant must state the reason for the extension of the time requested and the amount of time he or she needs. And in this case, the applicant is requesting a two-year time extension of time due to poor market conditions. As for tentative tract map number 38049, the application has completed annexation process into a community facility district, which is subject to city council review, and then also this final tract map has been approved by the engineering services, a plan checker. In order for the applicant to complete this project, the applicant will have to fulfill specific conditions of approval that are required by the engineering services applied to the city council meeting. And the city council will be reviewing the application and rendering the final decision in accordance with the, the current code. In reviewing this application, the staff has noted the following points. There are no specific findings or criteria prescribed in the municipal code section 9.63.110 for staff to analyze, and applicant is requesting a two-year extension of time due to unfavorable economic climate, which prevented him from finding prospective developer, developers in a timely fashion. And if you look at the, the zoning code section for time extension request or the review of time extension applications, it notes that the financial inability and the market conditions cannot be used as a justification to approve an extension of the time. However, because this application review is not subject to this particular section of the code, this particular requirement is not applicable to the project.
And there, Rico, so if I could just jump in and maybe elaborate on that one point, just because it did come up in question. We made those changes to our extension of time for all the other entitlements that live under the zoning code in 2021, I believe it was, and where we specifically added provisions saying that financial considerations were not sort of a valid reason to look at an extension of time. We did specifically exclude the mapping process from those changes in 2021, and that was by design. And some of that relates to the subdivision map act itself, and there are provisions within the subdivision map act that do contemplate financial considerations as it relates to the mapping process. And the state themselves, of course, over, over the decades, have taken their own action and sort of granted automatic extensions to TTMs when there's been unfavorable market conditions. They did so during the 08 recession. They also did so during the pandemic, where they granted automatic extensions to TTM. So I just want to be clear on that. We're, we're highlighting it because it came up in question. It is not a consideration we can make in, under the findings for other zoning entitlements, however, per state law, and I think an affirmative action by the city council when we did the 2021 changes, it is a consideration when we look at, at TTMs. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. By stating the reason for the extension of time requests and specifying the amount of extended time the applicant needs, the applicant, application meets the requirement of the applicable law. And then also, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the approved tentative tract map as a part of this application. And considering all these facts and findings, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution and recommend approval of the application to the city council, subject to the conditions of a city council resolution number 24998. The, the city council resolution number 24998 was adopted for the approval of the tentative tract map. This concludes the staff presentation. An applicant and a staff both available if you have any questions. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one additional sort of late piece of flavor to this, in that, for those of you that were around for the 2021 changes, we had also changed the process such that tentative tract maps, as a new tentative tract map, would no longer go to city council. The decision would rest with the planning commission, and then the final map process would go through engineering and city council. I think, although I wasn't here at the time, it was an oversight that we didn't carry that forward into the extension of time under Title IX of the municipal code. So we kind of have this weird disconnect in which city council wouldn't be seeing this. We're a new subdivision, however, under the current municipal code, they do need to see the extension. However, under the current municipal code, they do need to see the extension. And so I do think that is something we will look at cleaning up as we move forward with our zoning code changes.
Are there questions for staff on this? Commissioner O'Leary.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm suspect that I know the answer, and that we don't really have a great deal of discretion here, but I want to make sure. When this was approved two years ago, the airport, the airport operations in the surrounding areas were relatively static, as they had been for a number of years. Things have changed since then, and we now understand that there is dynamic and exponential growth expected relative to the airport, and that it has the potential for impacting the surrounding properties from an economic development standpoint, from, perhaps from a land use standpoint, from an impact on neighbors standpoint. However, the I, I don't see, without any findings that we are required to make, that approval of the tract map is something that we could reconsider under the new light, or in light of the new information that we have. So I guess my question is, do we have latitude? What should we be looking at in order to determine whether or not to grant approval to the extension? And can future expansion and growth of the airport be considered?
Right, and I, I think you're correct. I think probably the, the avenue to have that conversation would have been through the general plan amendment and the zoning code change, because that is where the city essentially established the policy that allows residential development on this parcel. And we are not, that those, those do not expire. Those are codified in law, so that framework exists on this site. And so I think if we were to look at this coming in as a new tentative tract map today, it would likely meet the findings, given that, you know, it's one of those, those odd, it's discretionary, but a little bit ministerial in, in that the findings under the map act are sort of very, does it meet the zoning? Does it meet the general plan? You know, those kind of findings. And I think, from staff's perspective, it would likely meet the findings today. So I think you're right. There's not necessarily a lot of discretion through this process to reconsider that. I will say, the airport, you know, in their master planning process didn't identify this as a potential area of growth. And I think, once their expansion plans are underway, there'll obviously be a process through the Riverside, and I can never, the ALUC, to look at the sort of policies and procedures that may impact some of the disclosures and other sort of things that will need to occur to, around noise mitigation for any residents here. But that process has not occurred yet. So it seems primaturity to take that into consideration in terms of this action that's before you today. But I do think, and I know this has come up in other questions as well, there are other conditions of approval in here that speak to disclosures to potential owners that we may, that you may want to consider looking at and saying, we should probably put on the radar of future homeowners that, that this is all happening in the vicinity, and to be aware of that.
Commissioner Calerdyne.
Building on that, and the comments of previous commissioners, my biggest concern is the disclosure. I think that's the only thing we can really address. Everything else is pretty much set. We have the ALUC conditions that are in there, where we have to have a notice of airport in the vicinity. Can we change, I, we can't change ALUC's tech, but can we change the condition that we apply to include the fact that there is a new master planning process going on for the airport?
Which condition are you referring to?
It's ALUC number three.
So because that condition came from them, I would be a little bit reluctant to change that. But I do think there's a planning condition that speaks to the public disclosure to the property owners, and I think that's probably where you could make that statement.
I would be, want to, hopefully, we're not, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet, but you, you want to know that we can make it, and you will have suggestions when we get there? Is that correct?
Yes.
Other questions?
My experience with ALUC, just in the last two years, is that once that has been granted, it's been granted. It's, it's done. There's nothing to revisit. We're talking about future activities that haven't happened yet. So to quote the Supreme Court from yesterday, it's not, there's no standing yet.
Right, I think if they, if this were to lapse in another 24 months, and they were to come in with a new TTM in a few years, and ALUC had gone through a revision process, and there were new, a new classification affecting this property, at that point in time, we would have new conditions to impose, but we're not there yet. And I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions, Commissioner O'Leary, or Vice Chair O'Leary.
Well, I, I guess my other question was, I'm wondering if we were to not approve the time extension, what we have is a property that has been general plan designated for use, is owned for a particular use, and it has no parcel map, or in tract map, which, and with a very low-density designation, there's not a lot else you can do with it. It seems kind of like a dastardly thing to do to a property owner. What are the implications of a property that would be in that condition? What could be done with it?
I, I mean, I, right, I think they could put one home on it, but I think that they would have the right to come in and apply for another tract map. And again, under the, the findings and the process that we have and the parameters per the Subdivision Map Act, like you're saying, we have a general plan designation and a zoning designation on the property that do allow, develop, and contemplate development at this scale and this density. And I think, per our current findings, we would be hard-pressed to say no to a new application.
They could say, come back for two homes, or four homes, or something, but really, there's nothing materially different that they could do, and they'd be hamstrung.
Short of going through a general, you know, whether the city initiated it, or the property owner, short of initiating another general plan amendment and zoning change, yeah.
Okay. And if the applicant wanted to change the use to something that might be more compatible with big airport expansion, they're, again, would start over from scratch. They'd have to then go back for a general plan amendment for his own, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? I would actually like to ask the applicant a question. It's not a, a public hearing, but if you have a moment. My question for you, one of the major issues, and it's something we're looking at, we looked at the last time, was the, and neighbors came in and talked about the issue of the UPS trucks. And I, and my memory was that they were an issue on Commercial Street in terms of not only going through it, but also park, parking it up. And I was wondering how, how that's going right now, and if they're contained within their facility, or parking, parking in the UPS facility?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Adam Gilbert of AG Land Investments. You know, we still do have some issues with the UPS trucks going, not only driving quickly down Commercial Road, but also parking on, you know, it's an unimproved dirt lot at, at the present time. So they have been parking, you know, on the sides. You know, at, at the very beginning, when we first got these, got the zone change and the general plan amendment approved, we had talked to them, and they're, they weren't parking on Juanita nicely enough, but then there was Commercial. And it just, it kind of goes in and out depending on how busy and how many trucks that they have. But yeah, it has been a continued issue with those trucks.
For yourself and other property owners.
Correct. And just to a, address that, and maybe some of the other questions.
Yes, please, feel free.
Yeah, one of, one of the reasons why we pursued this zoning change and general plan amendment is that because of the industrial uses in and around that area, it deeply impacted the residential homes that are on the other side of this lot. It really is a residential area. You could quote that. It is a residential area. And because of things like the UPS truck, because of the airport, because of the IHUB in and around that area, an industrial use on that site would have further impacted the neighbors on Juanita and the rest of the summer neighborhood. And so one of the first things we did, I did, when, you know, considering the site, was talked with the neighborhood, went to the, went to their meeting. And we received, you know, quite a bit of support for this designation change to lessen the impact of the existing industrial uses and to prevent further industrial uses from having an even greater impact on them. And then one other thing was that I believe in the conditions of approval, and I don't have them memorized, all of them, but I believe it did not only address the airport noise, but also the existence of the UPS trucks that go down Commercial, and that will have to be disclosed to any future, you know, buyer of the property.
Oh, yeah, I noticed when I drove into this meeting today, that Commercial Street is completely filled, not only with UPS trucks, but also the employees that drive the trucks. One day, a couple months ago, I actually went to that UPS to drop off a package. There's no parking back there. There's absolutely zero parking. So all the employees are forced to park on Commercial, and the trucks that are on Commercial right now are semis. They're not the brown trucks. These are major trucks, so we would have to restrict parking on Commercial in order to make it a viable option for people to live there. I definitely want to look at UPS trucks, especially at four o'clock in the morning, when they start coming into work and loading up their trucks.
Yeah, we've pursued a few, we've tried to find another route for these trucks. There is city land to the north of that parcel and then around the airport that then connects over to where Research Drive and, you know, like, how Purple Energy is. But we could do it over the city, but then it goes to privately-owned property of AT&amp;T. I believe, it might be called something different now. But, you know, and so we would need to get essentially corporate approval, which didn't seem like it was going to be feasible. So we've looked at other options to try to get them on, to continue on more Commercial Streets than, you know, getting onto Alejo and, and going by these residential homes. But, you know, I think the way things are going with these companies, UPS, FedEx, they're going to end up by the freeway soon enough. It's just a matter of time, because they are kind of outgrowing the facility. So I anticipate that will happen in the near future. But whether that's one, three, five, or 10 years, I can't predict.
Thank you.
Can I ask, how much of a deterrent is it to potential homebuyers to have that kind of traffic? I remember when this was last before us, there was a great deal of discussion and a great deal of concern from surrounding residents, especially about the UPS. And this, I think you probably have a limited field of buyers for properties of this size, and in the price range that they will probably be. And we also, since that time, had a couple other hearings, or a couple other meetings, where people as far away as down at Vi, up and down Farrell, seemed to be distressed over the UPS traffic. I, this is kind of a rambling question. Part of it might also be for the director. First of all, I'm not sure if all the parking that goes on along Commercial is even legal. Is, for commercial use?
They haven't requested my permission.
Can they, are they entitled to use the public street for parking for their own business needs? And then, secondly, what would you, in a perfect world, and you were to advise us, what could we do to help protect potential buyers so that they know what they're getting into? Absolutely, they can choose to buy there. But we've got things that seem to be a little bit out of our control if, two years later, we're still having the same problems with UPS that we've heard complaints about all along. And we now have a general plan amendment, a, a general plan designation, and a zoning that allows the residential there. How can we help protect the buyers so that they know what they're getting into?
I'll start? Okay. Yeah, so I think the first thing to do is to have the disclosure, which is required in the, in the conditions of approval. I will say that, that UPS has impacted, and the trucks, has impacted my ability to find someone to purchase and develop these home sites. In addition, we've had, you know, increase of interest rates, just a change in the market. However, just so you guys are aware, the property is presently under escrow with a local developer who plans to develop the site. And it's just waiting on my finishing of the recording of the tract map, and I'm working with engineering, and planning to do that, which will hopefully be in the next couple of weeks, because we have submitted most of the things. But to address your question specifically, you know, what can we do? My hope is that, when there are homes on that site, it will not be an unimproved vacant piece of dirt. And I think that presently invites a commercial truck to park there, or to drive fast. And when you have neighbors around, you know, they're not going to step on it as hard as they do on Commercial right when they get to Farrell, and there's homes there. It's just common courtesy, right? So my hope is that, when we have homes, we have people living there, that there will be neighborly consideration from the drivers to treat it more like someone's home than just a vacant piece of dirt.
Other questions from Mr. Gilbert?
We might have the city engineer just kind of weigh in.
And, right, the city engineer just joined us.
I apologize for my tardiness. I had to pick up my wife at the airport, so here I am. I wanted to add some information about UPS. We currently have an application from UPS that we're currently working on. And they're expanding their onsite parking, their onsite use, so that all the trucks will have place to roost, not on the city street, places for employees to park. And one of the planners is actually working on that now, and they're going through their traffic studies, some other stuff. But they're very eager to get that done. They've moved forward a little faster than what they should have, so we've had to kind of slow them down a little bit. I won't get into the specifics, but there is a significant change to the UPS site, which should alleviate the impact that you're seeing on Commercial now. And that should be wrapped up probably within the next month or two, I would say, I would say.
Just to move from that to this, and thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I'll call you back if there are more questions. On this application, do you, you, you talked to me before the meeting as you were leaving, and told me that there were no issues, and that this was in good stead with engineering. Would you, do you have any, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yeah, the, the applicant has completed, and the annexation into the CFD, which is the Community Facilities District. The timely filing of the final map was done. It's been approved by our plan checkers. They've gone to the county to pay their taxes, I believe. And so it's just, at this point, en route to us for signatures. We're working with them. Their, their street improvement plans are in plan check. There are other stuff that they're required is in plan check. Should be just about done. And then we will produce a subdivision improvement agreement that will go to council for the final approval of the map. Probably, like Mr. Gilbert said, probably within the next week or two. So, or when, the next available council meeting, once we have all that stuff done. So there's no issues from the engineering side of this.
Thank you. I had one more question of staff, but it has to do with future, futures, when we, if you're looking at this in the zoning, when you're doing the zoning update, in terms of this, the extensions going back to city council, it would be really helpful if you could also look at it from the point of view of, are there any findings that we should make, and what are the appropriate findings? It was a little bit surprising to find an extension with no, no requirement for findings. So if that's, if that's within your purview when you were doing the, the update, if that's something that could come back, I think that would be really helpful.
Absolutely, and we'll look at that. I think, you know, if you look at the way the Subdivision Map Act is written, it's also very loose and silent. But there is a clause in there, and we need to look into this more, that does seem to allow local jurisdictions to establish findings within that does seem to allow local jurisdictions to establish findings within the parameters of what's allowable. And I see our city attorney is unmuted, so perhaps he has something to add, but...
Thank you, Chris. Madam Chair, member of the committee. Yes, that's something we can certainly look at. There may be also be some additional authority as a charter city that we would be able to include within the code, but we can certainly look at that. I'll coordinate with staff on that.
Thank you so much. Now, this is back to the commission, and what I've gathered from the commission, I could be wrong, is that we're close to an approval on this with the exception of PLN 11, which was the condition that the applicant, this was what was in the originals, the applicant shall provide written notice to all buyers of the adjacent land uses and noise impacts in a reasonable form to be approved by the city attorney at the city's reasonable discretion. And I'm wondering if there are suggested changes to that, Commissioner Cowardine and Alain.
Maybe we need to work with staff on this to get the exact language, but that, something to the effect that either growth is anticipated at the airport, or they're simply saying that the airport is undergoing another master plan process and may be accommodating additional flights, something as simple as that. And we can't obviously prejudice what the airport does, but we notice that they are considering it.
I, I think a simple sentence at the end of this, just to say, you know, the disclosure shall include but not be limited to notification of the airport's ongoing master planning process and expansion plans, as well as the adjacency of industrial activities, something to that effect.
That, that's, is that acceptable too? So we have language, thank you. Can I have a motion to that? Is there discussion? Well, do we have a motion, and then can we have discussion?
I'll move the, I'll move the staff recommendation as amended.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Are there, is there discussion, Commissioner Rotman? Oh, you just turned your mic on, so, okay. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, can you call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. The extension's approved by us. Thank you very much. And moving right along. The commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any reports, requests, and comments? Commissioner Alain?
Choosing my words here. Thank you to the director for providing a copy of the consultant contract for the upcoming update of the zoning ordinance. And what I want to say is, oh, pick me, pick me, pick me. If, if, however, I won't say that. What I will say is, if there will be a subcommittee of commissioners, or if you need volunteers from the Planning Commission to work with the consultants, I would be honored to participate.
You volunteered yourself, yes.
Well, and that, and so I had that on my update list as well, but since we're on it now, a couple things, and then I want to come back to that. So first of all, our zoning code team will be visiting April 9th to 11th. We'll be doing a tour of the city. We'll sort of be meeting with other department heads and department staff and kind of getting them some exposure to, to what's going on in the city and getting them exposed to being on the ground here. We have a Planning Commission meeting the night of April 10th. They would like to come and meet you all. We will be putting on, on the agenda as a study session. I think, it's not going to be a big, broad study session. I don't think there's sort of a lot to go through with you yet, but I do think they'll be picking your brains in terms of what you want to see, the priorities, where you see gaps or issues. I think, again, at that 30,000 to 50,000 foot level, so we're not going to sort of be getting into the weeds yet. So just putting that on your radar to start thinking about before that meeting. We haven't really gotten into the work planning part yet to identify what that need is, but I absolutely think there will be a need. And so I do think, you know, as a commission, whether tonight or maybe at that April 10th meeting, thinking about whether we want to appoint one or two or three members to kind of be the subcommittee related to this, I do think that would be helpful, whatever that looks like as we go through our work planning. So very much appreciate the offer, Vice Chair Alain, and, and sort of leave it to you all to determine how you want to structure that, how many, or if you want to keep it sort of small with one liaison. We can grow from there if we need to. I don't have enough information on the process yet to sort of advise what I think is best. Maybe we start with sort of one liaison and then move to a subcommittee if we need to, but that's sort of up to you all, how you want to organize that.
I can withhold my enthusiasm until April 10th, and, and then I can re-express it.
Perfect.
There's just a question I have, is inevitably do a zoning change, if you start looking at land use, uses, that's going to generate general plan amendments as well.
So the general plan amendment is already underway. So the land use element, there will be revisions to that. That amendment has been underway. Of course, the housing element was approved first. We will be bringing back the other three elements that are part of the limited update to you all in the next couple of months.
The question is, will the zoning, will the zoning update generate its own set of...
So it may, yes. So to go there, so one part will be bringing the general plan, land use element changes down into the zoning code change, but then it may also have to work back up. Part of that is because of the timing, right? We started the limited update in 2019. I think it was a very different world, and this, you know, the state framework was very different. We have made certain commitments in our housing element, for example, that I think are going to necessitate changes to the general plan. So I, I think you're exactly right. So there'll be a bit of a dance that we have to do there as we sort of know and get, know more and get into the weeds. But just to finish that, because that was another update I had, we had a steering committee meeting last week, was that just last week, on the circulation element specifically related to the limited general plan update. I think really good feedback. I would, just to sort of summarize it at the highest level, I think the primary goal was making sure that we're thinking very progressively in terms of circulation and how that's going to look at growth going forward, and making sure that there are no policies in the circulation element that will limit us in thinking about issues around parking, and what the appropriate amount of parking for residential development or specifically affordable housing might look like, and making sure that we have policies that allow us to promote pedestrian and cycling activity, for example. So at, at the highest level, that's my quick summary. The consultant is working through all of the comments that were provided. They'll be making changes, and then we will bring that forward to you all in, in short order, along with the other two elements that you've already seen. So we're hoping to have that whole process wrapped up before the summer break.
And that was the consensus at the, the meeting was to, basically, to make sure that there were, asking directing staff to make some changes so that it wouldn't limit us when we did the zoning update and keep us confined to what we currently have as opposed to where we want to be. We had, three of us were there. We almost had a quorum of the Planning Commission there. And any comments from you on the commission, on that meeting?
The meeting went really well. I think we got good input from, from the community over the last eight meetings in two and a half years or however long that's been going on. Yeah.
Five, I think.
I, I was very satisfied with the results.
And I thought the consultant did, you know, the consultant specifically on the traffic side, and no disrespect to my colleagues in traffic engineering, but, you know, sometimes those conversations are not necessarily the easiest to digest, and I thought they did an excellent job at presenting in a way that was very clear and concise.
I did remember one thing. Councilmember Middleton had mentioned, this has been ongoing, trying to get greater access to the rail tracks between here and anywhere, so other than 2:00 AM when the Chicago line comes in. Has any progress been made on those communications?
I don't know that there's been much in terms of conversations with Amtrak, but the Riverside County Transportation Commission process around the Coachella Valley Rail Extension is underway. I know that they've moved into phase two of their environmental review for that. They've received, I think, a significant amount of money from both the state and the federal government to, to continue that work. Of course, it's still a long way off, but they are looking at, you know, extending down into Indio through Palm Springs. So that would at least provide...
They would build a third rail, too.
Sorry?
They would build a third rail for along those tracks, part of that project.
Yeah, but I'm not aware of what conversations may have happened with Amtrak in terms of not having a middle of the night stop.
Commissioner Cowardine, did you have comments from that meeting?
No, as you may know, I've been expressing a particular concern about this process in terms of the circulation element, in terms of not abandoning our old fashioned, completely abandoning our old fashioned level of service discussions, because I still think that they're important. And the consultant did make me much more comfortable that they're explaining how that process is going to work in the new era of VMT.
Right.
But I still will be looking at that. I think VMT just looks at global impacts primarily, whereas the old level of service stuff really does look at your neighborhood, and I think that's important.
Right, and so I think my understanding, and Commissioner Cowardine, correct me if I'm wrong in my recollection of this, but essentially, changes were made, made under CEQA, where we're looking at the VMT, which is a more sort of global perspective, not sort of looking more locally. However, in terms of the entitlement process, we are still through city procedure and policy looking at, at VMT on a development specific basis. We still have that covered.
It will be an exciting process, and I understand it's an exciting process in other cities as well, trying to figure out this new world.
Right. And I don't fully understand it, but that was my basic understanding.
And then the next item we have in front of us, this page, in case anybody else was wondering what it is. This is, these are the City Council priorities that council wants to make sure we understood, and it's one page.
Double sided.
Double sided.
What is it?
And I know it's fairly general, and, but it's something, Chris, do you want to talk about us putting this into both our findings and our, and our discussion in terms of...
Absolutely. So, and I wasn't here the last time they did this. They typically, they have traditionally done this annually, this sort of strategic planning process. We, in 2023, when the new city manager, Scott Stiles, started, moved to a two-year budget cycle. So we approved a two-year budget last, last June. That takes us through 2025. And so in tandem with that, they are now doing this on a two-year cycle. And one of the changes that happened in this process last year was there were many pages that sat behind this previously that got into a lot of specificity. So, you know, under each of these, 1A, 1B, 1C, there were a list of actual tangible city projects that were underway that fed into them all. The, the, well, some of them are still listed here, the Navigation Center, for example, and there was a lot more detail behind this. They've kind of abandoned that and, and sort of brought it up a level, again, to be sort of an overarching principles, as it states at the top, so that it's guiding all of the work that we do throughout the city. The major change, there weren't major changes in terms of quality of life and community infrastructure and the subcategories within here. What was changed in 2023, and this relates to, as, as the chair was saying, work we need to do through our code update, and as we're thinking about our work, sustainability used to be its own subcategory, and they elected last year to say, that really is an overarching goal that we should have in all of our work, because it really is threaded throughout all of these other goals and principles. And so I think where that relates to us, and this is part of the conversation around the Starbucks drive-through, was, does our entitlement process, does the zoning code into the general plan, you know, fully sort of support the city's sustainability goals, our climate action plan, and all of the sort of documents that support our sustainability goals? And so I think something that we are thinking about through the zoning code update is, how do we sort of put that into the entitlement process and the decision-making process? And so, you know, without knowing where we'll go with this, you could imagine maybe there's findings we need to start to make around sustainability or some of these other goals and policies, and that's something that we'll be thinking of as we go through that process, certainly. So that's sort of as much as I know on this, but that, that's how it's informing our, our work as we move forward.
So when we talk sustainability, and I think it's, and I don't know if the council is looking at that from an urban heat perspective, and combating the climate change that we're seeing, or sustainability in terms of no more styrofoam cups.
I think it runs a full spectrum. So certainly that, and that's been a recent conversation. I think that they're looking at changes to the foodware ordinance to sort of move the needle even further in that conversation. But I think it also sort of feeds all the way up and more relevant to our work around how our zoning and general plan policies encourage more compact communities, density in the appropriate locations, how are we promoting transit, how are we promoting alternative forms of transportation, and how are we encouraging sort of less car traffic on the streets? And I would say that's a big part of this. And then absolutely urban heat. So we hear a lot about shading, landscaping. I think a big thing, and we touched on this a little bit in these meetings, our changes the state is looking at in terms of water use, and obviously that is going to feed down into the planning process and how we're doing our work. And I think all of that kind of lives under this very broad, big umbrella of sustainability, which is why we've moved it up to the top, or why they've moved it up to the top, because it really does have its fingers into so many different aspects of the city's work.
And social equity as an overarching goal, and you can look, you can look at shade, I mean, there's, clearly there are issues on shade equity in different neighborhoods of the city.
Absolutely. The water conversations, I think, bring up a lot of issues around social equity, because the way the state law is currently written, as I understand it, is, is the water agencies will just pass down the penalties that the state will impose for exceeding the water use targets that they're setting, which, in the draft form, as I understand it, is in the range of 25% to 30% water reduction by 2030. And so that has equity issues, because, you know, if, if you're relying on the users to voluntarily reduce their use or just face penalties, that's going to disadvantage certain communities much more than others. So, yeah, that's a big consideration, and that's why that's at the top as well.
We're looking at both as overarching.
One thing, especially looking at sustainability, one thing we still, we become myopic, saying, well, in Palm Springs, you can have styrofoam containers, but you go Cathedral City, you're getting a styrofoam container. Same with the gardeners. They can't use an electric blower in Palm Springs, but they can go to Desert Hot Springs and use an electric blower. We need a overarching C-VAC to make this really work, because now it's this cut and paste postage stamp of, what, what city am I in? Oh, did I cross the border? I can't do that, or I can do this. And it just makes people go, just give up and say, I'm just not going to bother.
Absolutely, and I think those conversations are certainly happening to try and get our, our friends throughout the valley. You know, I, I've heard it discussed in two ways. One, I think that there's an idea that Palm Springs can sort of be a leader and try to sort of be a trailblazer, and, and by putting ourselves out and setting the example, maybe others will follow. But of course, that has the consequences you're talking about. So then I think there are certainly conversations going on throughout the food chain to, at different levels to try and, and equalize what's going on throughout the valley, because I hear you, I think that's important. If there's nothing else on that, I have a couple other items. So I had distributed, we are currently in the midst of recruitment for all city boards and commissions. I handed out some of these so that you can hand them out at dinner parties or whatever social events you're at, if you want to carry them around with you. I would say, you know, we're in a pretty good spot. We're in a pretty good spot for our Planning Commission. I think a couple of you have terms that are expiring at the end of June and need to reapply. I'll reach out to you individually if you're not already aware of that, but I don't think we have anyone that's terming out of the commission, so we're fortunate in that, that regard. However, the Architecture Review Committee, as you remember, we had a difficult time recruiting in our last round of recruitment when we had a series of, several folks leave, and we have several other members terming out at the end of June that will not be able to continue on. So, and per our zoning ordinance, and the way that the ARC is structured, we have very specific requirements about who can serve. We need registered architects, we need registered landscape architects, we need architectural designers. And so to the extent you are aware of anyone who fits those categories, please encourage them to apply. Send them my way if they have questions. Ken Lyon is our liaison, and he's very excellent at sort of selling the, the benefits of being on the ARC and, and the benefit that it provides to the city. But if you know anyone, please encourage them to apply.
So on Monday, April 1st, I'm, my, it's my day to go to the Architecture Review Committee, is my task within... Am I tasked with anything in particular?
I think it's just good for you to listen in. I'm trying to think of what's on that agenda. I think it's a relatively light one, and I'm not even sure that it's anything that has necessarily come before you. I think one is a hillside house in desert, well, in the hillside. I'm not going to say where, because I don't know that it is in desert palisades. So it may be items that don't typically come to the Planning Commission, but typically the role for you all in sitting in on those meetings is to just listen in, report back here, and anything that's relevant to report back to this commission. And then if anything were to come up, and I'm just going to use an example, Cody Place, for example, where I think there was a lot of discussion here about how you wanted the ARC to participate in that conversation. You know, they may, the Chair may have called on the liaison at that time. They didn't in that case, but they could have said, you know, Planning Commissioner Baker, anything you want to share with us in terms of your consideration? So that's really the role, but otherwise, you just sit back and watch. It's in the large conference room, and you can attend by Zoom if that's more convenient as well. Yeah. Okay, let's see. I think that you all had also asked for some project updates at the last meeting. So I'm going to go through a few of them that I do have updates on today. The Dream Hotel is proceeding, and we are looking tentatively at them going to the Architectural Review Committee in mid-April. So they are in, they've submitted a draft package related to the north and south villas that were decided by the city council last May or June, I believe that went to them. And so as you recall, they made certain changes to the, to the plan, the previous plans that had been approved in 2019 to add condominiums, villas at the north and south corners of that property, and that still requires architectural review. So that will be proceeding to them. They are in the process of getting their grading permits and everything else, civil permits to actually start onsite work. That is what we're hearing. I believe we'll be seeing activity on that site at some point in the next few months, or so I hear. The Thompson Hotel, I believe this came up at our last meeting, and the news had sort of freshly broken that they were delayed. What I'm hearing is it relates to some engineering requirements around their ingress and egress and some of the landscaping that is being done around the perimeter, such that I think, and this is not what I've heard officially, so this is me thinking out loud, but I think, you know, the September deadline isn't necessarily because they need that much time to complete what needs to be done, but probably because it will be summer when they do get done what they want to do, and that's, of course, not a great time to open a new hotel. So I think they're just looking ahead and saying, let's focus on the fall, but work is very much underway and continuing. And I think what it will also do is narrow the gap between, they had planned to initially open the first phase, which was sort of the north end of the development, before they were finished with the area further to the south, which you can tell, driving by, is a little bit further behind. I think this will likely minimize that gap, and they'll be closer to opening in tandem. The Orchid Tree, so of course, that's another one of our fun hotel projects that's been around a while. We are certainly working with them on revised plans based on their last conversation with council. They've simplified the design to cut down on some construction costs, but there are no other sort of major changes or updates there. We're just waiting for them to submit some revisions based on the last round of comments that we gave them. So that is moving along, albeit slowly. Serena Park, so this is another one. I don't think this has really come before you in any official way in quite some time. I'm not sure that.
But it came for many years.
Yeah. What I do, what I am hearing is they are working with somebody, a potential buyer of the property, that would look to take it over and move forward with the development. And I'm hearing it's a more experienced developer, and we are just working through some revisions to that development agreement or some, they've requested some revisions to that development agreement if they're going to move forward with that, and so we're just working through that process with them. Of course, you know, the big one that's on the community's mind and the city's mind is the payment of the $2.5 million that is outstanding to the city as a development agreement fee. And so we are working with them to ensure that whatever process moves forward, we are made right on that payment as quickly as possible. So that is underway. Soho House, we've had some preliminary conversations with their team to try and get that project back on track.
Project, what's that again?
Soho House. So that's the Colony 29, is that what that's called, property? And so they had, just over a year ago, sort of put the brakes on that project, citing, you know, a number of challenges, I think, around CEQA and some negotiations that were happening with adjacent property owners. I think they've worked through some of those. They're looking to make some changes to the project, and we're hoping that they come back and get that back on track, but just wanted to give you an update on that. And then Block B, so you had all seen the development agreement for that at our last meeting and approved that development agreement, which granted them a six-year time extension that went to city council. They also approved that. There was a conversation around what they could do, and this was something you all had sort of asked as well in your conversation with the lot, with the lot in terms of landscaping or improvements to it, to make it look a little bit better in the interim if it's going to sit vacant for a while. The agreement that was reached with the city council is if they do not pull permits within 18 months. And so the background to that is they were a little reluctant to say, we'll go out and make all of these improvements to it if it's just going to be undone in 12 months, if they get through this DIR issue quicker, as quickly as they'd like to. So the agreement was, if we still haven't pulled permits in 18 months, then they'll do an interim landscape and improvement plan to improve that area until such time that they can move forward with the development. So that was the compromise that was reached. That is it in terms of project updates. We mentioned the airport a little bit. I have a commitment from the airport to come and update you all on the master planning process. They're very busy with a whole bunch of things that are going on at once, so that's a capacity issue, but I'm hoping to get them here in May. So that's the goal for that, yes.
Can you clarify what, if any, influence or authority the Planning Commission has with this presentation the airport's making? It's not really clear to me that, is it just kind of come here to, as an FYI?
It would be informational, right. Yeah. So it's entirely being driven by the airport, through the Airport Commission and the city council.
Last time we did, the Planning Commission did review the master plan.
They did, and that doesn't appear to be the approach that's being taken this time.
It could, well, it would request that.
I think the city council has already determined it's through the Airport Commission and them, and they've already had a lot of conversations on that. So I, it would have to go to city council to make that determination. So largely, and not to say that they wouldn't take feedback, but that's the process that it's being driven.
I had asked you questions about two housing developments on the north side of town that had been approved, but clearly are not in construction.
And I knew I forgot something on my list, and it's that. So I will look at that and get back to you on that and update you all at the next meeting.
We had the Sunrise Extension as well?
And that question, so was that about whether it extended to the west?
That's a different question.
Okay.
The question, the question, the status question I had was on the segment from the existing terminus of Sunrise over to Indian. And part of that's built with, it's a condition of the development out there.
Mirelon, yeah. So it is a condition. It gets triggered, I'm forgetting the exact threshold, but it's, it gets, it gets triggered when the single-family homes on that sort of north-east.
That area, yeah.
Portion of Mirelon come forward.
But do they, have they started thinking about putting in plans or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't, no, I don't think that they're there.
It's going to take a while to implement.
Yeah. I don't know what they might have done behind the scenes, but I don't believe they've initiated anything officially with engineering.
And the other Mirelon question is the triggering of the entrance. There's a third, third or second entrance and exit from the property, and that was triggered after a certain number of units were built, and are we there yet?
Okay. So I dropped those two, and I'll bring them back. Yes.
I have one more to add.
All right.
The property, I'll verify this. I think it's 450 East Palm Canyon.
Okay.
It's a, it came in front of the Planning Commission before I was on the commission, but I'm aware of it. And I'm just wondering if you have a status. It's been about a year since it was approved.
Did it come, came for the hotel, for the restaurant in the back?
Yes, yes. Nothing's happened with that property.
It's on the north side of East Palm Canyon, and it came to us for a back restaurant and bar.
That's right. And you had all imposed the condition to have a follow-up on that after, a certain amount of time after it was operational.
And it hasn't started any development.
No. And so I, I don't, I don't know if they've initiated any of their building permit process through the building department.
It's sitting derelict.
So I will look into that. I don't know.
Thank you.
Was the hotel on the south end?
Yeah, and they were going to build an accessory restaurant to service it.
It would be excellent to know on projects that haven't come forward, if they're still alive, if they haven't started, if they're still alive.
Yeah, that's, in some cases, difficult to ascertain, insofar as they're still within their entitlement window, right? So we could look at whether they're in the building permit process, but that's not necessarily also going to tell us a lot of the story either. But, yeah, we can, we'll look into that. And I just have a couple of final updates. So we talked about April 10th as a study session for the zoning code update, but we will also have two on April 25th. One will pertain to the draft tree ordinance that the sustainability group is working on. And so I think I'd mentioned this last time, and I circulated the article that the Chair had shared around trees generally in the valley and how, you know, we, at that time, were quite behind the curve. I can't imagine we've made a lot of improvements since. And so sustainability is looking at a tree ordinance around how we can sort of ensure that we're protecting our trees or replacing them appropriately if they do need to come down. And the other one will be for a potential change of zone that we would be looking at along Ramon. And we have in our zoning a prohibition on drive-throughs. And before I say that and it becomes a triggering word, this is for a bank drive-through that is specifically prohibited in the zoning that is along there, and so they would like to sort of take the pulse of you all on whether or not that's appropriate. So we'll bring that forward and have that conversation. Early days, we were just having conversations with them, so I don't have a lot more information to share in terms of staff's perspective, but that's a conversation we'll have on the 25th. That or those are my updates.
Still have banks?
Okay. With that, I'm going to adjourn till 5:30 on Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. Wish you all a good two weeks.